God bless you.
Call the planning board meeting to order, September fifth, six thirty-three PM. We have an agenda. Oh, this is electronic, videotape recorded and gonna be broadcast that live now and it can be broadcast at later date through YouTube or the town website.
Tell them that I'm waiting in the room?
Hmm?
Can you tell them that I'm waiting in the room?
I don't know what our ratings are. Our advertisers have certainly dropped away. I thought last night we would have been welcoming a new member, but that, that vote has, the vote to fill the vacancy has been postponed until Monday, the tenth at six thirty-seven. When are we?
I can't make my.
Six thirty.
Yeah.
Six concrete trucks.
Well, you, alright, but you said, you said you could last night, but that's where it did not.
Can I call, does it, is it make any, is it legal to call and say to you, this is the person that I would like to?
I think we can get permission from the select board to do a remote call-in.
Let me get back to you because I am pushing to get this job started at six o'clock on Monday morning.
Or I will ask Ryan if it's permissible to have you write a letter, you know, in, like an absentee ballot.
Okay.
I don't know if that's legal, but um, let's work on something to have you, have your vote count. I haven't heard from anybody else, but I think, Bill, you can make it?
Yes.
And Craig.
I think Craig said he could make it.
Craig said last night he could, yeah.
They apologized.
No.
If, if I can possibly be here, I will.
Why don't we, uh, figure out a way to do this?
Actually, I will know Friday whether I can.
Well, you can't let the concrete get hard in the truck.
No, and I will, I'm, I'm, I was trying to convince the guy that I worked for all this time, I want this started at six o'clock. The trucks can be there at six, I know that's.
This is AM?
AM.
Oh, okay. Alright. I had a agenda, you've introduced a couple of things, correspondence, can we take them later? Because we have a guess, two guests here, or many guests, but we have two guests that are gonna be on around seven, so let's see if we can't get through this. Can you flip to the purpose? Document that, the PowerPoint, first slide. I try to, try to, uh, bring out the purpose of the planning board. In our zoning bylaws, Article One, these zoning bylaws are adopted for the following purposes, and these are, of course, the purpose of the planning board. To ensure realization of the general statement of purpose declared in Chapter forty, the state law. To protect the right of every resident of the town of Hubbardston to clean air and water, freedom from excessive and unnecessary noise or odor, and the natural scenic historic and aesthetic qualities of the environment as declared in Article something of the Constitution of Massachusetts. Permit and assure planned orderly growth in the town of Hubbardston, and provide for compatible development and use of the town's land and resources to provide adequate housing and services to residents, visitors, employees, and towns in the, in, in the town of Hubbardston. And here, is a copy of this whole thing for you, so you don't have to take a picture of it.
Thanks.
With your slide, I can give it to you electronically as well. So, um, next slide, please. And we're doing, and we're trying to make sure the public's business done in public, compliance with open meeting laws, public records laws, conflicts of interest laws.
Sorry to interrupt. Lady who was just coming through was just indicating that there's an alarm going off in the, in the main building. I don't know if this is.
The library?
I, I have no idea if it's the library or she couldn't tell me. But I think if somebody could just check it out.
No, it's okay. I don't come back in twenty minutes.
Oh, okay.
It may be just a tripped door or something like that.
It goes on. Conflict of interest, ethical standards, and always done in the best interest of town. These are called out in our charter and there's nothing new. These are really the, the highlighted laws. So, returning to the agenda. There's a open meeting law training opportunity coming up in Orange in September, prepare to attend. Put on by the, obviously Attorney General. Patty stepped out, so I'm gonna jump over the meeting minutes of August twentieth. Borrego is the next topic. Williamsville and Gardner Road, we have a report from the administrative assistant regarding the checks they've provided. They've provided, um, the money that we would reimburse Bill Murray with. And, um, we have that money, and the last thing I remember Tom Bracco talking about quite a bit was the fact that the accounting for that money wasn't straightforward. It was, it was to some extent, a little confusing. So, I'm gonna wait till Patty comes back and I'm gonna ask her, where'd she put the checks? And how do we get them out of our accounts back into, uh, Bill Murray's? There's three, three checks arrived from Borrego.
Tom, I got a question about the Borrego. I was, I was thinking about it. What, what, what do we go by to, because we said, you said during that meeting that we don't have to do a special permit
The last meeting.
on Borrego, on, and the change that they did down there? With these new solar panels, because it was a, it was a small change. To me, that seemed like a big one. And it, and that was all under a special permit, that you folks went through a, a big process to approve that. Is that really what we should be doing, or should we go back and look, and should we modify the special per, I don't know? That's why I'm asking, I wanted to know.
Well.
What rules do we go by to?
In, in the permit, there's a clause that says if there are minor changes, the, the board takes no action. And I, I predict that over the course of doing this project, there'll be a hundred minor changes.
Right, but that doesn't seem like a minor change. It seems like a pretty good sized one.
Well, are, you, in the first meeting of August first, you and Craig said, uh, you didn't wanna proceed, I, I viewed it as minor. We took a vote, it was a two-two vote. I said, well, you guys wanted to hear Bill Murray's opinion.
Right, right.
We sent Bill Murray off, he wrote the report, and he came back and said it was minor.
He said in his report that it was minor?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, that was his, and you have a copy of that report.
Yes, I do.
And that minor declar, the declaration of it being a minor change means that the board doesn't have to take any action. If, if they're down there and they have to move a gate or, you know, put the trees
Right, that's minor.
three feet over, um, then the board is not going to reopen the permit. And the permit was done several months ago. Um, Bill substantiated it quite well in his report, and our, did we post that report on our website? So that anybody, if they want to, can read it?
I'm sorry, what's the report with that?
This, this is Bill Murray's report on one forty-seven Williamsville Road presented last month.
The decision? No.
Not a decision. It was a, uh, I'll, I'll make sure it gets posted.
Okay. Well, I have a copy of it.
Yeah, you have a copy.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
But for the general public, I mean.
Right. Okay. I was just, I was thinking about it, it just seemed like it was a big change.
You were here, you were listening to what people were saying. I mean, come on.
Well, I know, I.
I'm the one who's got the hair raised.
Okay, settle down. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, just a question, 'cause I know Borrego has more than one solar project. Was this the project where they were gonna put in the batteries and the houses to store the batteries? And was that the one that we're talking about?
Yes.
So, that was considered, all of those buildings and, and the batteries were considered a minor change?
Well, they weren't buildings as such, they were containers for the batteries. They come in like a shipping container. And, um, yes, it was, and Bill wrote a very good report. He checked with four or five area towns that are doing the same thing, he checked with other building inspectors, he checked with our electrical inspector. I think he did a very thorough job.
No, he did do a good job on his report. I was just, my, my side of it, I was just, the more I was thinking about it, it seemed like a big change, that it's changing the concept, a lot of what they were doing, to just the solar, to the bat.
I know, there was some discussion about whether they would revisit the pilot, the selectmen would revisit the pilot based upon a fact that maybe.
There is no pilot yet.
Store energy.
There is no pilot yet to revisit.
There's no pilot on the project at all?
That's right, not yet. I mean, I think they're, I think they're in early negotiations or have filled out some forms, but it has, the pilot started after that meet, the pilot discussion started after that meeting, so the batteries are included in it. But places like Haywood Hospital, Holy, Holy, Holy Name High School, I think in Worcester.
It's another report.
Yeah, there's.
There was quite a few that he did.
Four or five area towns are all doing this. It's a peak shaving technique on the, on the power.
Thank you.
Real quick, Patty, uh, do you, have you been able to, independent of Tom Bracco being here, have you been able to figure out where these checks go, what account, no? Okay. Can we, what do I have to do? Do I have to meet with you and the accountant?
I believe that they, they go in the revolving account. I believe that's what Tom and Laurie and I had discussed at one of the later meetings, and I don't think anything's changed, but I just wanna confirm that with her. Did I put the account number?
I don't see, oh, yes. No, I see check number and an amount and, and what project it relates to. What we didn't wanna do was drop them all in one big bucket. We wanted to have the accounting.
No, I believe they do, these ones do go in the bucket of, remember the, um, the one we pay all the accounts payable out of? The only, the decommissioning fees go into the individual Borrego accounts that are based on each project. But these, I believe, 'cause we're going to then turn around and give them paid places.
Yeah, revolves right out.
Right, so it is in the revolving as far as I've.
Alright, but I saw there'll be money left over, and I thought that money that was left over had to be assigned to a particular project, not just a general money bucket. But let's take it up with the accountant.
Okay, 'cause I don't know what's.
Alright, and then the other thing is Borrego wrote a letter about the fact that they're, they've sold their project and they're, um,
It should be in there.
moving, yeah, it's right here. They're, they're, uh, I guess the word, my word, would be reassigning the surety money to the new owner. And I wanna go over that with the accountant too.
Tom, excuse me, before we do that, can you go, can we back up for a minute?
Sure.
The laws and training opportunities. What was that training on and when?
It was open meeting law, September something.
In Orange.
In Orange, Massachusetts, put on by the AGO. If you go to the AGO's office, or OAG, I guess, Office of the Attorney General, website, these training sessions come up. There's one in Worcester, there's one in Orange, there's, they're around the state. And, uh, it's a, it's a thing you can do by web, or you can show up in person like a classmate.
Excellent, thank you.
I can give you the notice if you wanna walk back over to my office with me. I can give you the, uh, notice that I have on my board. That gives you the directions and the times and dates.
I'm pretty sure you emailed it to everybody, didn't you?
I thought so. Yeah, you might have emailed.
You know.
So, can you get in?
You didn't get your email?
I didn't, well, Tom has sent me, and sent email, and I didn't get it.
Yeah, we're, we're working on it, don't worry.
But I have not looked at my planning board website.
That's.
The Gmail.
That's where it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
But come with me after and I'll get you a copy and then we can.
Can I see those slides again? I got one quick question on these two.
Okay.
And I promise it won't be my last question, Tom.
Alright, I got slides for everybody.
Do we have each, either bullets?
Uh, yeah, they're open meeting law, public records law, conflict of interest law.
Where do I find this? Where do we find these?
Alright, well, if you, actually, uh, if you actually go to the website and say MA, Massachusetts,
Yep.
OML, open meeting law,
Mm-hmm.
Come right up.
Okay.
And I'm pretty sure that that's what will also happen. The public records law is actually on the town website, because it describes how you would request public records. And it has a background document to that, it has the, uh, public records law. There's a whole family of laws, I don't even know if you flew it, it's called retention laws, what you gotta keep, what you can throw away, you know? And, um, they're also listed by name and maybe law number, you know, like forty-three A or whatever it is, in the charter, the town, the town charter.
There's a few here that I wanna check on.
Yeah. You can give that back to Patty and I'll hand out these copies.
Um, this is the open meeting law that you were just referencing. I Googled exactly.
Oh, thank you.
So this pops up and you can see all the videos in, uh, content order, they're all about ten minutes long.
Okay, thank you.
We have to go back to the minutes?
Well, where am I now? Yeah. Do we have the August twenty minutes or, no? Okay.
Yeah.
If you get them, um, draft them up, flip them to me, I'll work on them for you and give them back.
Okay.
And, no, I'm serious. I don't mind doing it at all. I covered the, decommissioning surety. I'm gonna have to go with you to, is it Nance?
Laurie, for the accounting, for?
No, for the surety money. I believe the surety money is maintained by the treasurer.
I'd have to look into that.
Na- Nathan? Nathan.
Sandy.
Sandy Nathan. Yeah. It's in a, it's in a account somewhere.
You may.
We'll do it. Don't worry. We'll get there. Um, and over the last two meetings, or three meetings, we did some assigning of people to different spots. And I tried to make up a little table. I think we just need to go down and review it and vote for who's, who goes where. Craig Boissonneau is our representative to the select board.
An extra.
And I think we voted him into that position on June twentieth. And that showed up in a meeting minute.
Mm-hmm.
Right. Then I was asked to work with Ryan on hiring the new clerk. And that showed up in a meeting minute on July fifth. But these other ones I can't find, and I think we oughta, uh, just vote them, you know?
Okay.
Bill, you were gonna.
Excuse me.
Actually, I got voted in at the meeting with Tom to do that one.
Yeah.
At that one meeting. Now, I reached out to, uh, Tom and he wasn't able to help me out at all. Bracco.
Oh, okay.
But that's when we talked, talked the last meeting, I couldn't get any information, so, and I can't get into the office, 'cause I'm not available when it's open. And that's where all the information is.
Well, I think we can get you, we can solve that.
Okay, that's fine.
You around tomorrow?
Uh, no. I'm available.
Good, 'cause neither am I.
I'm available next, uh, next week.
Alright, well, let's start next week.
Okay.
Give me a buzz or see me in the, on the comment and, 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 uh,
Okay.
we'll come over here and
Sounds good.
do it on a day when the door is open, we'll go through the, uh, Patty knows where all the bones are buried over there and, and, uh.
Right.
General areas.
I thought we brought all these on the same night, though.
I thought we did too, but I can't find them in the meeting minutes. Ryan suggested that we vote them.
Okay.
Now, I don't care if we vote them all at once and just say, this is, chart's accepted.
I mean, let's make sure that everybody's.
Motion, we accept this.
And keep everybody.
Let's go through it, let's go through it and see if you agree with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I, I agree with that.
Holman's, you have the pits, Boissonneau had the roads and the driveways and the, there's some kind of a tree law.
Yeah.
I was on economic development, Bailey had, um, noise.
I got my noise stuff right here.
And, alright, there's a CPC rep, Vince was it, and I thought I'd step in there. I'm not, I don't have to, anybody else want it, they're welcome to it. They only meet about four times a year, I think. But I think it's important. And then everybody's on the affordable housing. That's an ad hoc committee. And we haven't met in a long time, and I'm not sure we'll meet right away anyway. So, take a motion on it if you wanna do it this way.
I make a motion that we that we do what?
That we accept.
That we accept it.
Well, my previous motion was I, I made a motion that will, will keep the assignments as stipulated in this chart.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Seconded, all in favor?
Alright, now, I got another question. Do we have a quorum?
Yeah.
Yeah.
'Cause we're a five-member board.
The three of us are.
Is that a quorum? It is. Okay, good. Alright.
Kendall, do you need more, um, do you want the history of the noise stuff that I have? I have a small stack of stuff that Vin and I pulled.
Of what?
Noise ordinance.
Oh, yes.
Stuff, if you want, I'll make a copy of that for you.
That'd be great, thank you.
Then some reports were due. Bill, you just gave us the gravel report. But you did visit it, didn't you?
Once, yeah. Actually, I've been up there a number of times over the years, over the last thirty-five years, but.
Well, we need a current report.
Uh, nothing's changed from many years. There's the one report, the, um, Marinelli pits up there, and there's a lot of tonnage of, uh, concrete waste that verbally was, I was told by Mr. Bracco that was brought from Worcester and dumped on the property, which was allowed at that time, and not, it was supposed to be, something was supposed to be.
I don't think it was allowed.
So, but he said there's no, no information in the office on the permits that he knew of that could be found. And there was also, no, nothing in the office to, to show that they were allowed to do it, so I think the first.
During, during the, uh, they, they came in for a permit, and we went through quite a process with their engineer and their owners, and, uh, they admitted it, admitted to it being there, and they said it was their responsibility to dispose of it. And, uh.
Is that a writing?
We may have, 'cause I found the whole Marinelli.
Well, we got them on videotape.
Oh, okay.
They're in here.
Oh, alright.
Yeah.
Do you remember when that was? 'Cause it may be in the minutes.
Well, I can find it.
Okay. 'Cause I revisited the permit again in twenty twelve. Do you think it was that long ago?
No, it was the, it was the permit that we ultimately rejected.
Twenty seventeen? Okay, twenty seventeen.
Yeah, it was a denied application is really what it was. It wasn't a permit.
We may have it, Bill.
Okay, good. Get something to start with. Okay.
Yeah, they, they admitted to the three hundred and fifty tons or whatever it was, and, and said they would take responsibility for removing it. And, uh, there's an issue with the gate and access and all kinds of things going on, but, um, I guess we need a report, not just of that, but of the whole site.
Right, right.
'Cause they don't, they don't have a fence up or anything.
Nobody does out there.
Yeah, really steep cliffs, people get hurt.
Yeah, it's unsafe out there.
Yeah. And, uh, alright, so, um, noise report.
I have, there you go. I downloaded this, this is the state of Massachusetts. The law pocket, the state of Massachusetts, um, dangerous noise levels.
Are these, are these numbers in here the dangerous level?
It, it says up here that in general, the decibel, it said anything above eighty-five decibels will cause hearing loss. And they give a list of what series of items that are, and then they give you the, um, general for the general laws on, on the, on the second, third page, second, third, and fourth, fifth page.
Sorry I laughed, but I saw baby crying, one hundred and ten.
Yeah, I thought that was pretty interesting.
What's this now? Noise ordinance, Boston's noise ordinance?
Yeah, this, this has come out of Boston, Massachusetts.
Well, why don't we, why don't we accept this as a draft and read it and, uh, discuss it in more detail next, next time?
Yep. And what I wanna do is get the copies that, of the information that you have.
The ones that I pulled for Vin were, um, in right-to-farm areas, so it has a little bit more, since we're right-to-farm, there may be more farm equipment and things like that, so that's why I focused on those, but that's what I'll give you, and then.
That's good, whatever you've got.
The reason this came, comes to the planning board for an issue to take care of is because of what? Is it part of, uh, the regulations in, under the planning board that I haven't read yet, or?
Oftentimes, noise is a zoning bylaw.
'Cause I know, uh, in law enforcement, they were tasked over the years to do that, and they went to the Board of Health, um, and they were tasked with that.
They used to have it, isn't it, I think?
Is there one?
Yes, it was.
I mean, is there one now?
I don't, I don't know. I'm just, I'm new to the Board of Health, so I'm just saying out there, is this something new for the planning board? Or is this something?
Yeah, we don't have one.
Yeah, this is, and I like this, I, that's why I volunteered for this, because I have some morons that are flying up and down my street on motorcycles.
Mm-hmm.
And I've gone out there with, um.
You're being recorded, sir.
I don't care. I've gone out there with my firearms showing, slowed them down, stopped them, explained that there were kids across the street, that we don't need, you, these kids run out in front of you, you're gonna hit them, we don't need the noise. And, uh, they were very good for about a month, and then they got back at it again.
There's been a lot of complaints and problems over the years with, uh, neighbors and families getting into problems with four-wheelers and motorcycles, and when they have the horses and other animals on the property, where it ends up going into district court and nobody does anything for it. Ends up just, nothing happens, so it is a big problem.
It is, it is a problem. Sometimes you have to go, uh, about at night and take care of these things.
Um, we're, we're, you're on TV.
I'm sorry, Tom. I, that's, that's fine. I don't believe I'm saying anything illegal, I mean.
Well, I think, uh, no, but, let's, uh, let's read it as a draft.
Yeah.
I'm not sure the planning board will end up with it, or if it goes to the Board of Health, or, if somebody's already got it done, we're not interested in doing it over again.
They're very vulnerable.
Right, right. But I think the Board of Health a few years ago got involved with that, and they had regulations, and I'll have to look into that just to make sure, and I will, I'll check into that.
Uh, from a planning point of view, usually noise ordinances are put into place with regards to the uses of a certain parcel of property. Think like a, a concert venue, or a restaurant that has a built-in band, bandstand platform, something like that.
Okay. Okay, that makes it part of the zoning then?
Exactly, that goes into the use of a structure which puts it under the purview of the customer.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
Help with that.
Craig Boissonneau had streets and driveway permits and scenic roads and whatnot, 'cause he's always driving around looking at them, so, um, we await his report. We shouldn't have to wait till the next meeting. He can, he can bring it in electronically if he, if he has it available. So, now, at just about seven o'clock, and we've got some, uh, a new person we'd like to introduce, Todd Miller. Did I get that correct?
Yes.
Todd Miller.
One syllable, it's not all that hard.
Miller?
Yes, oh, Todd is. I've heard all the Miller jokes, you guys, all of them. I do have.
Come on up. Todd is the, um, regional, five town, the same as our, our school system towns, regional planner, and he's with us for, I hope, a long time, but this first year it was paid for by a grant, I believe.
This is true.
That was championed by the Q E M P, Quabon Educational.
Municipal partnership.
Municipal partnership.
Educational municipal partnership, yeah. It started off as a task force for the reuse of buildings, and it just kinda metamorphized, metamorphosized into this.
And I think, uh, Ryan, of course, was also instrumental in, in, uh, roping you into this and setting, setting some goals and whatnot.
This is true.
And, uh, Ryan thought it would be a good idea if you met us and, and had a little time with us. We, we have just about an hour budgeted.
Sure.
So if you wanna take some time, and then we can take some time, or have a free-for-all. I'm not sure how you wanna do it.
That sounds good, the first one.
Thought, if you wouldn't mind, the, um, when we met as a region, we've set up this idea of, of branding the, the Quabon region to allow it to become a place, uh, where economic growth is viable, understanding that the five towns are, are different and all have different needs. So we met with the, with the goal of, um, hiring someone, as you, as you, as you put it. And now we need to task Todd with what he's gonna do to help us. So Hubbardston gets about twenty percent of that, that piece in his time, and, uh, the grant's only for a year so far. We're hoping that it's fruitful enough to be something we invest in in the future, but we really want, and we did during the interview process, to maximize this time. It's not free money, but it is grant money, to try and, try and brand this region and increase our economic development viability. But, um, so I just wanna go over what, what I told Todd that I'd like to see in terms of, of my office or from the executive office. But I also told him that each town is unique, and that importantly comes and he hears from the planning board as, as to what, uh, the planning vision is, what Hubbardston is, so that, and you're gonna see, he's very ambitious with his ideas, I just wanna make sure that they're integrated with yours and the select board's and the. and you're gonna see, he's very ambitious with his ideas, I just want to make sure that they're integrated, uh, with yours and the select boards and the communities, so that everybody's on the same page and this can be as productive as possible. So the, um, the things that, that I have put in place for Todd, which he said he could accomplish quickly, which, um, I was.
I've already begun work on the five-year.
I was impressed by is, our website has a section developed, economic development, that has, is undeveloped, ironically, so we want him to develop that and, uh, give us a presence in, in the region and for people that are looking to invest in our community. Uh, revamp the economic development committee, which Tom brought up earlier, he's been appointed to by your, by your board. We want to make sure that all the boards are appointing their members and appointing the at-large members, so we can have a, a viable council that, that's helping us with economic development. It's gonna create a, and using existing ones, create a business list and ask businesses and meet with businesses to talk about how they can, um, how we can better serve them, right? Because I think the basis of our economic development should be to make sure that our current and existing businesses have everything they need, so that newer businesses know businesses will be supported when they come here. So he's gonna come up with that. Start the basis of a welcome, um, packet or committee, so that anybody who's coming in can understand the permitting processes, what we're doing to streamline those things, and to have sort of a liaison to help them with any sticky points in economic development in the community. And then finally, develop, um, what people have seen is my favorite is some type of long-term or five-year plan for, for economic development. So it's pretty, I thought it was an ambitious agenda. He told me it was taking like two weeks, so.
Yeah, I've already begun work on the five-year.
Yeah, you got like two days left, and I wanted him to, uh, meet you, and then, uh, and obviously you would, uh, start by telling him who you are and what you've done and how we can consolidate current and existing plans, because there's no need to reinvent the wheel when a lot of it exists.
Duplicate efforts, nah. Um, I guess I can start introducing myself.
Please.
Obviously, I'm Todd Miller. Uh, I went to elementary school in Okham, went to Quabon from middle and high school. I left here, got myself trained, went to college, got qualified as a city, as a city and town planner. So this is a very personal endeavor for me. This is home. So it's, it's important that you guys know exactly where my loyalty lies and where my training is. Um, I worked previously both for the town of Franklin, which is ironically a, a community, a city of thirty-three thousand two hundred and fifty people, which is just a smidge over this five towns cumulative total. Um, so it's the sort of work that I'm used to dealing with, that the workload I'm used to dealing with. Um, I've got an initial broad strokes plan here. I've already begun work on the five to seven-year economic development plan. Um, it's, we can't ignore the elephant in the room, like we heard from the, uh, the finance committee, over ninety percent of all of the five towns get our, all of our resources via tax, via real estate tax levy. And we can't ignore that elephant in the room when we're talking about economic development. So we can't talk economic development without talking about the folks that live here and the real estate issues that we got to deal with. Noticeably, between the five.
Oops, go ahead.
Between the five, um, after the, the recession of oh eight, that's when we saw a really large population hit. And we've continued to leak some, just through general attrition that you get every year. Um, that's a good place that we just stop the bleeding first.
By population hit, you mean decrease?
Exactly. Sorry to be unclear, but you're absolutely right. Um, the entire region saw a similar, uh, downward trend after oh eight especially. Uh, it's kind of leveled off after oh eight, but it's still, we're, we're bleeding people every year. And that's the community of customers that we need to retain in order to build that infrastructure that supports a business community. So that's the first step that we need to do. We, um, I've got some broad plans here, but I've also been speaking with the US Department of Agriculture, the Rural Development Office in Holden, ironically. Um, also have been speaking with FHA and the VA, and the VA Home Loans Division. And I was thinking, uh, just off the bat, of trying to market ourselves to the kind of demographic that is most desirable to us. Those that ha, want to buy and live in a place for a long time, perhaps raise a family but don't have kids yet, because we would like them to have a small, as small a family as possible, maybe two or three folks, so that way we don't overburden our, our school system at the time. So we need to think about this pretty smartly and make sure that the folks that we're attracting are the folks that will do us the most good, and hopefully it'll be reciprocal on their end too. Um, if you like, I can hand these out here. Um, I've got some, I've got five, so I got a couple of extras if anyone wants one.
Can you, at some point, give it through Patty electronically?
Absolutely not. Yeah, I can do that. No, it's, um, if you, if you want one.
Wow. Thank you.
Like I said, this is broad-stroke stuff. Most of it is common sense. There's nothing overly academic or jargony. A lot of it's just common sense. Oh, yeah, sure. Like I said, I only have five.
I tell you, where did you say you live?
I live in Berry currently.
In Berry?
Yeah, I live in Berry on South Street. Um, I.
Right at the street from the school.
Yeah, I'm not that far. I'm at the bottom of the hill. I'm on sixteen nineteen, the other end. But, um, I, I've lived in New Braintree on Millstone Road. I've lived two places in Berry. I grew up in Okham on Spencer Road. This, this entire, the only town ironically I've never lived in is Hubbardson. That's the only one.
All right, so why didn't you live there?
I don't know. Probably because I was like nine years old.
Okay, I'm lucky.
It's all good. Um, but we can either walk through this, or you guys can peruse this on your own time. Like I said, it's not overly jargony. I stayed away from a lot of the shop talk that is kind of only restricted to those in my discipline. But you'll see that it's really common sense stuff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, aside from getting the real estate issues situated and trying to stave off the bleeding as far as population, after that's done, uh, we can do these simultaneously. We can start working on developing the entire Quabon region as a brand, because the issues and challenges that all five of these, these towns face, every single one of these towns is unique, but the challenges they face are shared. In the sense that as a region, we're either going to sink or swim together. That means we need to show some solidarity, work in good faith with each other, not that we already don't, but we need to cooperate if we're going to make it work, and if we're gonna survive and pass this town off in a good condition to the next generation. So we need to start thinking beyond five years out. I would like to see five or seven years, if we could do a five to seven-year plan, uh, in the sense that, um, if you measure the lateral growth outside of Worcester, which has increasingly begun to get very, very expensive. It started to spill over into Holden, which was already expensive, but also to Rutland, which just, as, just recently, as of two or three weeks ago, they hired a full-time planner on staff, just to, to manage the growth that they're experiencing. Um, their land prices have been going up pretty sharply in the past three or four years, and there's, they're going to be slowing down that pace of development. Whether they put a, a cap on building permits, whatever they decide to do, they haven't, the new planner hasn't decided what he wants to recommend yet. But that's going to spill over to the towns that adjut, uh, Rutland, which will be, of course, Okham, and those folks are in our area. So give it three or four years, maybe five. Rutland will have all the development that they have a taste for, and then their folks are just gonna continue driving until they qualify for the mortgages they like. At that point, it very much becomes our business, and we should start laying the groundwork for it now, because it's only a matter of time, and the writing's been on the wall. We just need to read it and adapt accordingly. Um, so we can go over this real quick. Um, the first thing I would like to see us do is that we, after we, um, get everything acquainted, get a quick five to seven-year plan kind of formulated in our heads, we should reach out to some of those local lenders. We should reach out to the Rural Development Office that we have in Holden, to the US.
Local lenders?
Uh, local banks, lenders, whoever provides mortgages in the area, so Spencer Savings Bank, all the local banks, um, uh, all the credit unions that provide mortgages, all of them.
Oh.
And we should market our area as a great place to live and work. Once we attract folks that are the right demographic, we can get some new people coming in, and that provides the customer base that they, we can then, you know, put all of our economic dev- development efforts on top of. We need to create this area as a brand and market it as such, because this is a fantastic place to live. I grew up here. People would be darn lucky to grow up here with a family. They really would. And we need to shop this as a place that is, one, affordable to live in, safe and comfortable to live in, which it already is, and it's beautiful to live in, which it already is. Folks just need to know about it. And once we get some folks in from that angle, I think the rest of it will start to kind of, the engine will start running on its own. Once we have a, a population large enough to support businesses, the business community will see us as an untapped market. They'll come in with very little exertion on our end, if that makes sense. Um, I, I, I'd love to get other ideas, if, from everyone else. I'd like this to be a, a consensus collaborative type of approach. But, um, that's the first thing I, I would like to see happen first.
In that first chapter, the only thing I could possibly add to it, I think, is, um, it was a standing in Worcester looking out kind of vision. There is another, um, road, Route Two.
Yep.
Uh, the Westminster, uh, Ashburnham.
Back corridor, yeah.
Corridor that's coming, another, a, a, a different army is coming from that direction.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, yeah. We have folks coming down from the north too, from Mickelbro, on the street.
I met a young lady last night that, uh, used to live in Paxton.
Yep.
That did a lot of research, and her and her husband retired, and they moved to town.
Mm-hmm.
And I'd love to hear her ideas of why she did that.
Yeah.
Um, and she's sitting right there.
Oh, hi. Speaking of one twenty-two, hi.
Um, to hear, you know, maybe bring those ideas and those thoughts of why you, why you picked that, picked this town.
Yeah. That's.
And I'd love to hear that, if you'd share it with us. Well, that's something we got to.
Well, sure, all right.
I hate to put you on the spot, but yeah, I'd love to hear it.
Just quick.
Well, I mean, it was a retirement plan. I was a lawyer in the city of Worcester. My husband was a professor at Clark.
Okay.
We lived at Paq, in Paxton for twenty-six years, twenty-five years. Lived in a pretty, you know, eighteen-hundred square foot ranch.
Yep.
Um, and we decided we could, you know, it was always convenient, and we were very busy, right?
Yeah.
But it really wasn't where we wanted to retire so much, although our church is there, and I love Paxton, I've served a lot of times.
Yeah, I, I love Paxton, it's down there.
So it's sort of a combination of, for the same three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we could buy a much better house.
Mm.
Um, there's a lot more country, we have a dog, we're big hikers.
Oh, yeah.
Um, you know, it was more, it was more peaceful, more rural, more than, uh, you know, was, it didn't seem that far out, I mean.
You're, you're actually, your situation is outlined in this paper that I have here. I.
Oh, retirees, good retirees, Bob. I, I get it.
I, actually, I called it, uh, I called it bookend targeting. You're targeting folks that are either retiring or those that are looking to buy a starter home and begin a family. So tho, that's the, the ideal in my mind would be folks that are in their early to mid-thirties, have one kid, maybe two, maybe six to eight years old.
Right.
Uh, that will go through.
But doesn't that put a big burden on the school system?
That's why I'm only picking two, because I don't want to have us recommend only having three people, because then we'd have a net loss of kids, and we need to get some folks into the school system, but not too many. It's kind of like a line we have to walk.
Mm-hmm.
We want to make sure that the school system is maintained as close to its ideal levels as possible, but not to overburden it. So we don't want to have a bunch of McMansions with eight kids coming in. That would just be too much of a shock too soon.
Correct. And then other people, they, they voice their opinions, they're saying there's no work close to here. Saw a lot of folks that moved from the e, east twenty years ago here, when we were really booming back in that era.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of homes were built.
Yeah.
Um, it was very cheap for them, but they had to spend two and a half hours on Route Two.
Yeah.
To get into Boston with the heavy traffic and it's, because there's not a lot of work around here.
Yeah, that was during the nineties boom, like you find that all, it's like a uniform staple all across the country.
Really? Okay.
If you look at the, the units built per year, no matter, I could, I could probably take a, a running bet on any zip code. You'll see a bump in the ninety-two to ninety-eight times, like time slot, it's just, it's like a s, running standard. It's a joke among all the housing planners. But, um, that's the kind of speed bump that i- it's always noticeable, but there's not much we can do about our location. Uh, however, it's a good thing that, uh, Worcester is booming in the way that it is. Marlborough has already developed itself remarkably in the past fifteen years.
Mm-hmm.
And there are folks, even Lemonster, Fitchburg, those twin cities are starting to clean up and get a little bit more, more life breeds into them. Those folks that live and work in any of those areas I mentioned, they would view areas like, like ours, if they wanted to buy something and live there and raise a family. And that's something that we can position ourselves as part of the market to, to fulfill. So that's something worth doing.
I have a question for Alice. Isn't it true also, Alice, that you, um, were involved in the wave of people that entered the Quabon, is it, what, what is it?
Wachusett.
Wachusett Regional School District?
Right.
Um.
Well.
You were, you were the head of the school committee, I think.
I was the head of the school committee. Our problem was, we were five towns too. Two towns, Princeton, Paxton, or K through eight. And then, and they were each ten percent members, it was a twenty percent, twenty-member board, huge board, because it was population distributed.
Yeah.
But our, our big problem was when they consol, we, we always had a regional high school, and then they regionalized the elementary schools too.
Okay.
And they pulled in Rutland, which was trying to lift Rutland up, um, at the time. So anyway, there were a lot of imbalances, and there were a lot of state formula problems that were debated.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then we had to build a new high school, because if we have any, or rehab it.
Yeah.
Because of its accreditation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, you know, it was just hard, because it was two-thirds votes in each town, and I mean, we eventually, it, it was brutal. It was like six votes, and we finally got it through.
It's really hard to do. Right.
Um, so anyway, that's a little bit, and we did, finally did a rehab building.
Okay.
Um, and I do know that the town would, this, the, uh, state building people helped a lot, because they said, do it now and you'll get sixty-four percent paid by the state. Do it next year and you'll get.
Fifty, or something.
Yeah, so there was an incentive from the state. And the other thing is you could only look in demographics, how much you could build for your school. You could only look ten years out.
Mm.
So we did know, we were looking at this huge bubble in the high school, it would peak out in two thousand ten and eleven, and then it would drop back.
Okay.
So I learned a lot about demographics and how you do that.
Oh, yeah. It's, it's really, uh, it's a, it's a challenge to write anything that has some sort of scope to it when you're in the middle of a census year. In the sense that we have ACS estimates that are estimates, but they're not as reliable as census data is, and we don't get one of those until twenty twenty. So that's the kind of cha, I've had to base a lot of the writing I've done just from ACS, American Community Survey estimates, which are heck of a lot better than nothing, but they're not nearly as rock-solid reliable as census data is, nor commonly, you know. ACS data is usually taken into account, but not with the same gravity that a full census would be.
Right, first.
We had, I know we had to put in a report. And the other thing that was interesting to me was this same school had a population that was almost twice this big during, you know, the sixties. But because of the lab space requirements and sped requirements, I mean, you just name it. It was, it was woefully inadequate for the half-population we had in it. So it's just interesting.
Yeah. It is. Um, just coming up, oh, one second, just coming up today, that Q E M P, the Quabon, and all that, there's a report that just came out today that, um, that outlines all of the, the regional school systems and how they can share and adapt buildings, all the recommendations from, all the recommendations from CMRPC were just, uh, released as of four or five hours ago.
Wow.
So that's, that's gonna be something that's very much worth looking into. The report's two hundred and thirty-seven pages long, so I regret to inform you, I didn't print it. But, um, I, if you like, I can make sure that that's available to anyone who'd like it. Uh, it's, it's actually really fascinating.
Well, isn't it posted on the Q E M P site? There is a site.
Uh, yes, it is. Yeah, it's on there. It's gotta be posted up there.
Yeah.
Um, if you're on the Q E M P, uh, mailing list, it's already been disseminated with a link to where you can get the PDF.
Yeah.
There's a meeting coming up, I'll tell them.
A week from today?
Right, if anyone wants to.
Do you have a question?
There, there's one, um, there's actually two. There's one that's the, uh, the kickoff for the action plan, which is a week from today in the administrative building of Quabon Regional Central High School. And there's also one the day after that, uh, for folks that could make the first one, which it's, it's gonna be really good.
Okay.
We've lost a significant number of, uh, students in Quabon, uh, over, over the last eight years, I think maybe a thousand students declined.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, yep. Yeah, it, it is.
And that's projected to, to continue, um.
It's, it's gonna follow a, a parallel to our, uh, our overall population. After oh eight, uh, folks that were, after the recession hit, a lot of folks were forced to leave the area, and were still kind of sore from that, and folks have been leaving sadly because of it.
Do you, are you aware that we have a rate of development bylaw here that, uh, that prohibits building more than so many units a year?
Yeah, with, with. Yeah, and that's, I mean, these are regulatory issues that the planning board work is gonna have to address in order to meet some of the goals that it's outlined here, to align with the strategy, and there's no real way around the fact that we're going to have to have increased development. Um, but the trick, the, the strategy is to make sure, like you've heard before, that it's compatible to the character of the town. You don't want to have a huge McMansion subdivision sort of thing coming into town, because it really will tear at the fabric of what makes this area this area. And we need to make sure that the spirit of Hubbardson, Hardwick, New Braintree, Berry, Okham is maintained. Um, but we need to find a line, because we can't keep out on the same track that we've been keeping on, because we're just keeping our head just above water by a little bit. We're gonna have to do more. And businesses won't come here out of charity. They need folks to sell to, and we need to have a customer base and the neighbor base to, to sustain them.
Okay. Ryan, did you have a question or comment?
But, did, so a couple of things that, that Todd pulled out, um, for this, for this board's consideration and why, why we're having this discussion is the idea of setting up our community for the future. So, is, some of the things we'll talk about with the select board and other investments we made are in our infrastructure, so the town-centered project, the, uh, Route sixty-eight North and South. Uh, some of the investments in Chapter Ninety we've made, those are all investments that are going to help create a place where people want to come. But there are other natural assets here, and other community surveys and other reports that, that this board has done and initiated are uh, indicating that our greatest strengths are open space, um, the, the, some of the state-owned land, and the idea that people like rural,
Yeah.
that live in rural America. So, we would really like to and, and are going to work on marketing that land, that open space land as a place to come.
Yeah.
And integrate it with, and, and you'll hear shades of Katie Young and Todd, the idea that you want to make Hubbardson. And integrate it with, and, and you'll hear shades of Katie Young and Todd, the idea that you want to make Hubbardston a place to come, so, um. Not just making our special events, those fun videos you put on Facebook, but as a way to draw people to the community. So, um, and what I don't want him to do, what I don't want Todd to do, I'm not trying to talk about you in the third person, but is to run off with a plan that doesn't match. Uh, existing plans, what's already been done for work, and the idea that you, you can, you can make a community out of people who work remotely or who don't necessarily travel, right? That might be coming in the next twenty, thirty years, so how do we position Hubbardston to take advantage of all of those things? I- is what this board and others are gonna have to help him weigh in on, so that we can combine existing efforts and come up with one future, one plan, one solid drive.
It's already here. Remotely, it's, it's really grown.
Overwhelmingly, the number of, by number of businesses, they're home businesses.
It's, it's going to increase. Mm-hmm.
Overwhelming.
If you, um, if you look at the business list that we, that you provided to me, a large portion of those have the same address, both for the owner and for their official address.
Yes. Yeah.
And most of those are service-based.
I think we had over three hundred and fifty home businesses when I pulled the list back in two thousand five, I think it was.
Yep. On what's avail- of what's available for, for sale, you're talking inventory businesses?
Business, the business list, registered business list.
Okay, okay.
I provided the, the two thousand seventeen business lists.
Seventeen, it's like October seventeen.
Okay.
And they're the, they're the business lists that, wh- when you start a business, you go to the town clerk and get a.
Business certificate.
A cer- certificate, which is different than a business.
Yeah.
The, the, the business is, uh, the, the permitting and the business process is something else, but that, it's a good start.
Yeah.
We try to.
It's, it's a.
One thing we wanna do is give you everything that already exists, so you don't have to spend time finding it.
Please.
And, and it may even be helpful.
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm just putting it out, I'm very much a quantitative measurable data person.
Maybe.
I've lived here long enough, I know the qualitative, this is my home.
Mm-hmm.
The quantitative, that's my stronger suit, I'm very good with math and statistics.
I think you have.
Anything that we can measure, that's something I like having an even metric to use for.
Uh.
Uh, the planning board is currently working on a, a new master plan, would any of you work in a face with something like that?
Yes. Potentially, um, I'm willing to overlap with them a bit.
Yes.
And maybe something I'm working on might be a chapter in a master plan or something like that, or they could draw inspiration from it, re- whatever really works for them. I worked on, uh, the town of Franklin's master plan, uh, and we, we, I drafted that along with, uh, my mentor there, so I've, I've got quite a bit of experience working on this.
I, I would think, well, our master plan process was do the survey and, and review the old master plan and we formulate a new master plan.
Yeah.
And we put together a few chapters, and one of them was the economic development chapter.
Yep.
Um, and we used, uh, Montechusett Regional Planning.
M R P C.
And, um, John Yoon, you might know him, he lives in Holden, um, Templeton.
Yeah, I know that name. Yeah. Yeah.
And, uh, I think he did a pretty good job, and, uh, you should get that, and I believe, if, if you have any trouble at all, I'll just send it to you.
Okay.
I, I have it somewhere.
Oh, it's.
And, um, uh, I, I can't believe that, in answer, kind of in answer to that question. I can't believe that the master plan we have done and the master plan you might go off that has a slightly different, um, lens on it, it looks at all five towns and.
Mm-hmm.
Instead of just Hubbardston, but they have to harmonize.
Absolutely.
If, if they're not, um, in tune with each other, then we'll have conflicts and, and it won't, it won't work.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
So, um.
Um, I've already been, I've already begun work on that. Um, I, just to get the bare bones and everything else, the s- the ma- the standard framework, we can put all, everything else on that together, like I said, in concert consensus with each other. Um, even still, it's the sort of thing that, you're right, all these things need to be in tune, because if it's dissonant in any one part, it could throw off the whole thing. Um, and we really need to make sure that there's a lot of communication between different boards, that you guys know more or less what's going on with Barry's planning board, more or less. That you know at least a little bit about what's going on with Hardwick, just, you don't have to be in the weeds of it, but just knowing more or less what's gonna come down the pipeline.
Yeah, that. No.
So we can make sure all of our decisions are taken into account, so there's no duplication of efforts or we're not competing with each other unnecessarily.
You probably know this, but I'm gonna announce it anyway, you said Rutland has hired a full-time planner.
They have.
Well, some of that is, um, because of the, oh my goodness factor.
Yeah.
Uh, they, they relaxed their laws in oh seven, because, well, no one's gonna build any houses anyway. And, uh, and they relaxed them, and now they have, they're faced with four hundred building permits.
Actually, just. Yeah.
Already buildable, they can't change them.
Mm-hmm. There you go, yeah.
Uh, they're, they're in.
Mm-hmm.
They're over a period of time, I think it's six years.
Yeah.
But, um, that's gonna be a wave, if, if there's two kids in each house, that's, uh, that's two schools full of people, you know?
That's a lot. Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that, they're in, that overflow or that, that pressure will undoubtedly affect Hubbardston.
It, it will, that's part of the five to seven years that I was mentioning. That spillover is going to hit us laterally, it's, it's not an if, it's a matter of when.
Might be soon. Yeah.
And it's not a matter of, I don't want it to, it's a matter of, well, it's going to happen, but we can choose what iteration it takes. And I think that that's probably the wisest way to go about it, is making sure that the development happens on our terms, rather than just being a victim to the winds, you know?
Okay. Where are we in your little?
Oh, I, I haven't even really been going off of it.
Are we, yeah, are we, are we hitting the high points though?
Yeah, this, yeah, this is, like I said, this is for your perusal after the fact, just to keep all the juices flowing. Um, like I said, nothing in here, like I mentioned, is overly jargon-ish, um, it's, it's pretty accessible. And, uh, if you have any questions, though, that reminds me, I wanna make sure that all of you guys have my contact information, both online and offline. Like, I pride myself, you can call me whenever you want, if you get out of work at nine o'clock, you can call me. Don't, don't worry about it. Um, you can call me, email me whenever you like, I'll get back to you instantly or as soon as possible.
Okay.
During outside business hours, I don't sweat it.
Can you, you wanna give us your email address?
Oh, yeah, yeah, uh, so the best one to get ahold of me at is Quavon E D C, Economic Development Coordinator, at gmail dot com.
Quavon, what was, I'm sorry?
E D C, Quavon E D C.
Quavon E D C.
Yep, at gmail.
At gmail.
I did have a hard, I did have an, a Hardwick email, but I chose to forego that, I didn't want it to look like I was playing favorites with anybody.
Mm-hmm.
I wanted you to be like the neutral face of all five of us. Um, that will change when I get the website I'm working on set up. Those are, that's still very much rough, that's easily six months down the road.
That's the five-town website.
Yeah, exactly, I'm gonna be coming up with a five-town website, so folks that want to, you know, experience what these five towns are like, this would be kind of like a tourism sort of website. You can find out what each town has to offer, what little quirks they have in their identity that makes them different, but it also speaks to the overall Quavon identity. Which I think is gonna be the main mechanism for getting folks to build or to move in.
Um, you're, you're, you struck a little theme there before, you said affordable.
Yeah.
Safe and comfortable.
Yeah.
And beautiful, that's a, that's a pretty good theme.
Yeah, naturally beautiful. I, I, I'm confident in it, yeah.
I like that. But it doesn't address what some people in town think is the answer.
Hmm.
Industrial development, um.
That's, that's a.
I- i- is there, is there any evidence that industrial development results in. Um, a- a- an improved quality of life for, you know, it's a broad term, but you, the general uplift of all, of all people living there.
Of all, like the rising tide for all the boats, um.
Yeah.
That's something we can have Todd research.
It's, that's, you can have an entire class on industrialization and the impacts and on livability in the region, like I would.
Well, livability is a good term, yeah.
Exactly, livability is, it's a very, it's a, it's a legitimate term. Uh, think of, uh, think of Motown, think Detroit. Detroit would never have been Detroit if it weren't for all the industrialization that occurred in it.
I've been to Detroit.
However, yeah, it, it cuts, that's, that's a fire that cuts both ways.
So let's talk about Hubbardston, so you said, um, the chapter of the master plan on economic development is something that we'll get to.
Yeah.
What, what else should, should Todd know, should he look at, should he think about while he's, uh, developing this plan and trying to coordinate the region, but specifically Hubbardston, since it's the only one he didn't live in?
Yeah, it's the only one.
So he's gonna have to live in it for a little while.
Um.
Yeah.
For at least a month or so.
We're getting a little ahead of ourselves, but there is a, a vast amount of information that, the last time we were together in this room, it was Mr. Lerner from the Finance Committee.
Yep.
Had tapped into the Department of Revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And he had presented slides, and he, he did a really good, um, door opening, you know, he pride opened that door and he said, look at all this information.
I've already connected with him, and he's already offered to help analyze whatever data I come up with, and we're both quantitative guys, so, uh, we're gonna be working together on it.
That's good. Right, I, I have some stuff also, I, I, I went into the same website, cause he referenced it.
Yeah.
And, uh, I didn't, um, completely agree with his, his way of analyzing things, cause he chose things from zero population to say five thousand.
Yeah.
And we're forty-six hundred.
Yeah, you're on the right-hand side of the bill curve, and you're counting folks so that.
Yeah, and, and it's not representative, so I, I chose a different selection, I went from our, our population to two-thirds of our population, and then to one and a half of our population.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
And then I dropped out, um, towns that were like four square miles.
Yeah.
You know, down on Route, Route twenty, you know?
Two hundred people. Yeah.
You know, and I, I got down to a smaller number of towns, about twelve.
Mm-hmm.
That are, uh, focused on the northern Worcester County Route Two corridor and Worcester's, Worcester North.
Worcester's tertiary area, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, and came up with an analysis of my own, I, which I, I think we don't have time tonight, but it, someday we'll.
I'd like to have a copy of it, if you don't mind saying.
Yeah, I, I can get it for you.
Yeah.
And then that, that Department of Revenue thing, what I did was I set them all up, all the towns, and I just went across by their Department of Revenue number. And, uh, and I highlighted Hubbardston, and then I went through each category, and they have things like, um, uh. Percentage of this gotten from that, you know, or percent spent on this topic, or, and I ranked Hubbardston from the top. In other words, i- if, if Hubbardston had a number of money, of dollars spent, how many towns above it spent more? Or how many towns spent more than it, and how many towns spent less than it? So you have twelve, and then Hubbardston gets a rating, like six is right in the middle.
Right in the middle, yeah.
Ten, it, it, uh, no, it was a small amount of spending.
Puts you at the top, more or less. Although that'd be, okay, I got you, okay.
Because ten peo- uh, nine towns spent more, nine out of twelve spent more, so you're in like the seventy-fifth percentile.
Yeah. So you're scaling it to in low.
Yeah, and I went through it at that, and there's some, some areas where, uh, for very small amounts of money, you could jump up the scale pretty good. And, and they were, uh, in the quality of life region, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, culture and these kind of things that go along with like Katie's efforts to attract people. You know, uh, if we had more of these kind of things, maybe, you know, I don't know, concerts or whatever it is, but, um, it, it kind of fit, and it came in for pretty small money.
Yeah.
Because we spend such a small amount already.
But.
But that kind of analysis was pretty interesting, and there's a billion categories, uh, of, of spending in the D O R.
Mm-hmm. I just don't want us to get so narrowly focused on just business or industrial development, because for a town like ours, community development is just as much economic development as, should we bring in X factory? Or should we incentivize what?
Well, could we go forward on that presentation to, to about the, uh, third slide, fourth slide, I mean, I'm gonna just skip through it, but.
Well, I didn't, uh, I didn't give him a copy of this presentation for that.
No, this is his.
I, I, I just came in with these.
I got, um, go to the one that's cut in half, this one.
Oh, blame, right.
That one. Mr. Lerner pointed out that disregarding the, the legitimacy of the goal. He pointed out that to achieve North Brookfield's level of industrial revenue, which was higher on the scale than, than us.
Yeah, that's percentage.
Um, you'd need a, almost five hundred thousand dollars, and that would come from an, from a assessed value of thirty million. And if you go one more slide forward, I looked at some Hubbardston examples. We've got two industries in town with their assessed value at roughly two seventy-five, I'm gonna say three hundred thousand to make it easy. To get the thirty million, you need a hundred of them.
Yeah, that's a.
And the, the chances of getting a hundred new businesses that would come into town and build buildings and, and whatnot are pretty slim. Um, so flipping forward, what do you do? Here's Hubbardston's population, note the fifty line. And, and what we were talking about earlier, you know, is a retirement target. So you flip forward one more, and I'm crashing through these, but here are two developments in town, Moosehorn and Madison. Um, the, the four million nine and the nine million five are their assessed values. They got twenty-three units, forty-four units, it's a no-kids situation.
Yeah.
Their taxes are two hundred nineteen thousand, that gets you half of what Mr. Lerner's target was. Now, it, well, in fairness to him, that wasn't a target, that was just an example.
No, it's, it's just an example, yeah, exactly, yeah.
But there is a fifteen million dollar assessment, so you get fifteen million out of the thirty. Um, one more slide, oh, oh, no, flip that. Uh, here are the solar systems we have in town, and in, uh, industrial, the, industrial assessments in seventeen, they came in at eight million. But by twenty, there'll be fifteen million, there's the other fifteen million.
Mm-hmm.
So there's thirty million that people are saying, oh my God, how can we do it? It's in our hands.
It is, it's also.
It's already here.
It's also worth pointing out that solar developments, the panels that are coming down the pipeline as far as techno- technology, the ones that are coming down are completely translucent. So they look like panes of glass, more than anything else. That's the sort of thing that will become increasingly common, by the time that we're really feeling the pinch population-wise, that's gonna be ten or twelve years. All the solar panels that we need will be as clear as the windows in your car, or the windows in, that services anything else.
I'm just doing money.
Oh, yeah, actually.
I don't care what they look like, for now. Um, but my point is, this, look at the dates. We started accumulating this half a million dollars back in fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, where'd the money go? You know, w- we cried for thirty million, uh, evaluation.
Yeah.
That yields a half a million.
Revenue.
Revenue, we, we were saying, oh, I've heard this happening over and over again, say, gotta have more revenue, gotta have more revenue, gotta have more revenue, we're, we'd die for more revenue. And, uh, um, it's already kind of in our hands, how are we allocating it? And how are we reaping a benefit from it? Shouldn't our, uh, what do they call those funds? This, um.
Stabilization.
Stabilization fund, shouldn't our stabilization fund be overflowing with money?
Yeah, just.
You know? So I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm seeing the revenue.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm seeing the potential for more revenue.
Oh, that's definitely a certainly viable avenue, especially with folks that, that come from a farming agricultural background. I, I deal with this a lot in Barry, there are several families that own vast tracts of land, that come from agricultural background, that sure as heck aren't gonna be moving out of, out of their house. That's, they're gonna age.
Well, they're land poor.
Yeah, they're not going, yeah, but, uh, they wanna find a way to extract revenue from the land that they have, but something that they can do in their advanced age. Something like renting out their areas for solar development is ideal for that. They can rent out their land for solar development as a solar farm, they don't have to exert physical effort into generating income from it, and it doesn't damage the land that they sit on. So after the farm isn't wanted anymore, they can break the farm down, the solar farm down, they can still hand the land off to their kids, and no one's the worst for wear.
Well, the, it's not, it's not quite that easy, cause these things aren't for everybody.
No, they're not, they're not.
And, and they're, um, gonna receive varying levels of acceptance.
Yeah, exactly.
But it's like telephone poles, you know?
Exactly.
They're not very pretty, but they're all over the place.
But there's also an infrastructural issue, whether or not the lines can take all the generations, there's a lot, yeah.
Yeah, there's, there's infrastructure and whatnot, but my point was, thirty million dollars, uh, value, assess the value. And the half million dollars that flows from it is in our hands.
Mm-hmm.
It's here, uh, how can we do it again, you know, another over fifty-five community or another solar panel or something?[1716.84] It seems like it's viable and the thing I like about them both are what I call uh unburdened revenue. In other words, if you build a McMansion, you put six people in it and two cars and and the whole bit.
Fire, E M S, D V W.
That that revenue comes to the town, but then an awful lot of it flows back.
In service, yeah.
Whereas in a solar system, there's no traffic, there's no, you know, no plowing driveways.
Yes.
Uh and the fifty-five plus communities that came out of our planning board zoning laws um were such that they did their own stormwater systems, they did their own streets, they did their own uh plowing, they they maintain their own properties. All of this was unburdened revenue and that's really, I think, key.
There's also some other tangential benefits too, in addition to that. Um if you make these affordable units through a forty B count, it increases your account towards the top.
Affordable, what?
Uh a chapter forty B, that's for affordable housing.
Oh, oh, okay.
Um and there's that ten percent state mandated goal that uh folks are, communities are looking to reach. That prevents a comprehensive permit from being placed in your community with little little input as far as the community goes. So for each of those fifty-five and over units that are designated affordable by the state, that ups your ten percent count, which m- which kind of safeguards you from an unfriendly forty B comprehensive permit.
We went down that trip. And we uh did the evaluation on where we were on that percentage.
Yeah.
And we were very distant from it.
Most, a lot of folks are.
And we we passed um uh uh regulations that um will counter the invasion of a forty B. Um uh and and allow the town to um slow that down so you don't get you don't get trampled by by that process.
Part of what I was doing in Franklin was a good section of my job description was working with the Housing Authority and making sure that the units that we came in to keep us exactly or as near to ten percent as possible.
We're nowhere near.
Yeah, most of most communities are.
Rural communities.
We're getting off topic.
So I'm just trying to focus.
Okay.
Yeah.
Todd, in in particular, but the so. I'm here to serve as a steward and to try and help coordinate visions for the community, right, whatever the community wants to do is is what I wanna do. Um it I think a lot of this is true, but it has to be looked at as a diversified portfolio, right, so solar isn't good or bad, it just is. It has good sides and it has downsides. Like uh solar right now under the SMART program, the uh an average pilot, just rough numbers, is about a million and a half for the entirety of the twenty years. And then after twenty years, it drops off, so that revenue is really great for that twenty years. Um but then then it ends, so you need something else to 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 complement it in terms of a pilot. And and same thing with the fifty-five plus communities are great, I mean, that's a that's a ton of revenue, would love to have that type of development. Um but they're not service-free either, you still need ambulance, police, fire, and plowing.
But they're much less service demanding than a forty-house development.
Underst- I understand, I'm partial to education right now, given where I am in my life with the uh.
Well, I I'm not against education, not at all, in fact, what better way to fund it than to have people pay for the don't have kids?
Oh, that's right.
So so the idea of what we're trying to establish is a way to, how about that, is a is a way to to make it all possible. And that's what I want to feed him for information, what does the town want, what does the community want, what do we want it to look like in five to ten years? Because that's the key, so we can and and have been debating this or that in the past, but we really gotta look into the future and say, what what do we want Hubbardston to look like in twenty thirty?
Yeah.
Uh twenty twenty-three, which is only.
So basically, people said in the survey, the last survey that was done, they wanna keep the rural character the way it is. And if you grew up here, you understand that.
I get it, yeah.
And I think that's where we'll move through with the whole process.
I I think that the emphasis on the compatible development, emphasis on the compatible, I think, is where we need to, that's where you guys come in.
Right.
Everything that comes in, it's up to you for a large part being the permanent granting authority. Um it's gonna be up to you guys to determine what is copacetic with with Hubbardston. Um that said, we'd we'd, as long as you guys keep in mind that growth is necessary and required, but it needs to take the form that that keeps this town what it is. And those are not mutually exclusive, um especially, like I mentioned, over ninety percent of our bills are paid by real estate. And we can't talk about economic development without thinking about the population loss and all the empty structures we have lying around. And those that are on the market that have been on the market for a while.
Mm-hmm.
So just make sure that we look at this uh with an open mind, keep an idea that we need a suite of ideas. Any one particular issue isn't going to be the golden parachute.
Right.
That that lists us out or prevents us from falling, I don't know that, not analogy, but uh it's not gonna be the single silver bullet that does it.
Ed, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if uh uh there was a gentleman on our finance committee that did quite a extensive report on on business trends and that, I didn't know whether you had.
If it's the gentleman I'm thinking of, I already touched base with him.
Josh Lerner.
Josh.
Yeah, Josh presented that at the at the uh select board meeting, August twentieth.
Yeah, Mr. Lerner. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've already met up with Mister Lerner, uh he and I are gonna collaborate on some uh data crunching and boring math stuff. But um are are there any other ideas, things that you wish that you could see that I could try to incorporate into some of these plans?
Hi, this town has a senior center that's a paper.
Mm-hmm.
Uh complex and it doesn't pass because it requires an override.
Mm-hmm.
And I think if you're gonna attract people fifty-five and over, it isn't even the people fifty-five or over, it's the people fifty-five and over that are caring for the people.
Mm-hmm.
That are eighty and over, live with them, you know, I went through this, everybody's gone through this. So so I'd like to know if there's some kind of study with how much does having a a good senior center, which, you know, has the the meals, the.
Yeah.
Uh I'm not saying we have, we do have a s- senior program here, but it's not what a senior center would provide.
It could be a lot more.
And my feeling is that it provides a lot to hold it and and certainly the seniors do add, they have their problems. You know, they vote against the school levies, they do need more ambulance, they do need, but I don't think you can really move forward if you're gonna appeal to fifty-five and over. Unless you do that, so I'd be interested in what uh what research has been done on how much of an impact having a good senior center has, so it might be sold. And also, if there isn't some way we can get it out of the override box, maybe through some FDA financing or, you know, some forty-year financing or through something that could make it happen.
That's the biggest fail- why it failed in the community because people couldn't afford the tax increase to cover it. Um especially when everything was all in the same bucket, it was it was a big tax increase for the population and that's, it was too much.
Right, but we actually shouldn't say therefore we can't do it.
Oh, no, everything's plausible if you work at it.
We need to figure out. Yeah, figure out how to do that.
Good planning.
The first half.
Do do away with prevailing wage, you know, because it's forty.
I uh like, we're trying to stay away from some of those, I don't think it would be that.
That's a whole nother story.
But the first half of your question regarding the research, that's a really interesting question, I don't know, but I wanna find out.
Yeah.
The second half of the question, that goes in the public administration, which is not my wheelhouse.
Okay.
But I'll talk to you about it.
Well, on the other side of that coin, I know in Berry, they have a really nice brand-new uh senior center over there.
Right across the street from the V F W, right, right down the street.
Correct, so I wonder, you know, you being affiliated with all these other towns, maybe you could look at that to see that that really helped them.
Quavon E M P is looking at regionalizing a lot of these and trying to have like a smart shrink strategy so we don't overlap as a five-town region, we don't duplicate efforts.
The other problem though, you gotta look at though, is a lot of folks, there was a gentleman tonight that lives down on Brigham Street, know him very well, but he had an accident out here because he's he shouldn't be driving. So people, we all gonna face this problem if we're living here, we get older, we're not gonna be able to drive anymore. You're really uh stuck at your home unless you get the the rides afford, you know, and we don't have that many here.
In in Hardwick, do you have the MARK program?
Well, we have it here too, but there's not a lot of that.
Oh, so maybe it's worth expanding.
So that's a whole nother problem that's gonna be kinda worked into the situation, if you're gonna, you know, if you're gonna keep people here and they're getting older, maybe we should look at a better process for that too.
I agree, because it's not even a matter of us keeping them here, folks are choosing to Asian place. That's something that, that's a r- a wave we need to ride or we're gonna get crushed underneath it.
Mm-hmm. Correct.
There's no way we can avoid that, so that's a question that we're gonna have to find a way around.
Todd, I have one element I wanted to address with you and that is is, I think, and I I brought it up several times and it's se- seems like uh this area, we're we're only fifty-five miles away from Boston area.
Yes. Okay. Mm-hmm.
Uh I do see a potential for tourism.
Oh, yeah.
As to whether or not there is something that is in your plans to potentially even look at that, and the reason I'm bringing this up is it because we have some interesting communities around us, uh very specifically, I mean Princeton, Westminster. With the Mount Wachusett area, there's a lot of outdoors activities, which is becoming very, very popular. And people do not necessarily want to drive two, three hours up to Maine to Vermont or to North New Hampshire where they can get some of the n- not only beauty, but you know, the natural resources that we have here. Which is certainly opens up that opportunity from an economic perspective.
Oh, yeah, it's actu- uh thank you for bringing that up because I completely uh overlooked that, but in this is a is an entire section on uh eco-tourism. And trying to be the the Vermont that's so much closer, the folks that live in Middlesex County or folks that are in maybe even in the southern part of the Cape that want to get out and see the trees. But they don't wanna drive from, let's say Franklin, just because I'm familiar with it, they don't want, they don't wanna drive from Franklin all the way to Vermont.
Correct.
That would be madness, but however, we can offer much of what Vermont does right here and we're a heck of a lot closer.
And it's the ancillary businesses to come around it that really promote the area and can pro- provide economic development and therefore, especially the 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 small businesses, which is really what we're trying to foster with the employment purpose. And certainly an area I want to 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 address given.
You're absolutely right, my O Cam, I I did one of these for every one of the participating communities. I'm gonna be kinda making my rounds over the next couple of weeks, but uh the section for O Cam, which has um the uh camp, Lake Dean campground, Pine Acres campground.
Mm-hmm.
I was going to meet up with them and see if we can leverage their camping as something that would work for O Cam. However, that's a good place to start from, but we can leverage those campgrounds, but while they're in the area, they can patron all the other businesses. They might be in O Cam, but they can still patron the Stone Cow and while they're there, they can also go to some of the orchards, like there there's, we can try to synergize all of these things.
Mm-hmm.
To make them play off one another and turn this area into something that's a destination to go to. Rather than driving four hours to some crazy place like Sugarloaf or something, they can drive an hour and a half and still get almost everything that Vermont has.
Thank you, the last item I I wanted to bring up is is, and this is not really something that adre- is addressed by you, but I think it's something that the community needs to realize and it's part of the planning board, but I think it's more like the select board, the town administrator. I brought it up last time that we spoke about this here, we have a significant amount of footprint inside of this town that is not really under any control of the town, which is really state land.
Mm.
Because it is for protective services. And the 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 amount of revenue, or I shouldn't even call it revenue, the amount of taxes or payment in lieu of taxes that the town receives from the state in order to protect these lines, which really are there for the aquifer around this area. In in my opinion, are 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 the surface to the town. And but and I'm saying it's it's great for the community at large and it's great for us because it opens up the area for 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 this natural uh uh the the natural beauty that we have. But when it comes from a compensation perspective, and I think it's just something that I wanna bring up from a general awareness perspective, I think the communities around here are suffering because of that. Because they're not receiving the economic uh uh benefits that ought to be potentially be paid uh to places like O Cam, Hubbardston, Berry, et cetera. That are basically having to put forth a lot of land, but not be able to tax it. If this were happening in Boston or if this were happening in Cambridge or Somerville, I think that people would be up in arms. And I think that's just something that in general we need to keep in mind and see how, as a regional entity, uh and and as as communities, we can potentially come and do some lobbying. Uh when it comes to uh the, you know, State House, uh in terms of getting better and more adequate compensation for this uh for this land that is that is that is not really taxable by uh uh by the towns.
That's a fair point of view, yeah.
Thank you.
That's outside of my scope, but I I haven't resonanced with that.
I I know it's artificial.
I believe the state has a legal obligation to assess the land as a best and highest use value. And they pay a pretty significant amount of money, I can I can find out the amount.
Uh I I I'm familiar with the amount that they.
We don't get much on the assessments on the state land. Pardon me? We don't get a lot of assessment on the state land at all.
No.
They don't, they don't pay much at all.
No. Absolutely not.
No.
Well, we have the numbers, I can add them up. Okay, Todd?
Yeah.
Um we all should go back and look at what we have, but certainly i- in the way of information that would help, Todd. But certainly included in that would be the survey results that we did in two thousand sixteen.
Yeah.
That are the basis for the master plan. The master plan outlined uh a few chapters of which have been accomplished and many chapters of which have not yet been accomplished. But the economic development and open space and maybe some other ones are done. And it's our charge, the planning board's charged to get that done. And uh so we'll give it to you, but we need all the help we can get.
Yeah, that's why I'm here.
Awesome.
And um economic development in general, I have a lot of information on local industrial parks and and um. And frankly, uh Hubbardston has a, will have a tough time competing because of the lack of infrastructure. Uh serviceable water and and power and high-speed internet and rail and.
The internet's doable, rail, Berry has an advanta- advantage over you guys on uh.
I'm talking really Route two corridor.
Oh, okay.
You know, up and down Route two, there's industrial parking, there's your parking, there's your parking, there's your park, and they're all point two, three miles off of Route two.
There's your tons. Exactly, they're or might even be adjoining it.
Yeah, I think uh Westminster has over twelve hundred acres.
Yeah, that's not surprising.
Commercial property.
That wouldn't surprise me.
Yeah, I have it in at Woodwood someday.
But it's it's the sort of thing, we 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 do need to have a more comprehensive approach, it can't just be one sing- we can't put all of our eggs in one basket.
Correct.
We're already kind of putting a lot of our eggs in the residential tax levy bra- basket.
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna have to branch out a bit. And uh the first trick, like I said, is to stave off the population decline. Because the first thing folks are gonna look at when they want to open up a new business, if they've got a business acumen, is to be like, okay, what are my future customers like, what's the average Hubbardstonian, you know, what do they like? Cause if they're looking at the numbers now, the numbers are more of a a hindrance than they are an asset and we can start addressing that first.
What do you mean?
Well, think of it this way, if you were going to start up something, a business that sells widgets, anything, um if you wanted to open up somewhere around here, you wanna make sure that there's enough folks to sustain your business as far as possible customers.
You mean buying widgets or making them?
Uh like, say if we're selling widgets, my thing is selling widgets, it's a traditional commercial storefront. Um there aren't enough folks here as far as the longer-standing trend for me to be comfortable risking a good amount of money, putting that into a storefront and or developing a parcel of land. If I'm not confident that this region is going to be economically healthy enough to sustain me in five or ten, fifteen years. So we need to shore up those numbers to make ourselves have the best phase forward for folks that wanna invest in town. Um if we can stave off and staunch the bleeding, it'll help with the real estate tax levy, secondary benefit. But the tertiary benefit is going to make us much more attractive to folks that wanna be entrepreneurs and work and live and reside in this community and start up a business. So we're gonna have to shore up those kind of foundational infrastructural issues, make sure that we can address the population bleeding. And after that, then we can really start looking forward to putting all of our eggs and just attracting new businesses. We're gonna be attracting new businesses the whole way along, don't get me wrong, it's not like it's A then B, but we're gonna be doing all of them, but we need to shore up that population decline. Cause that's really gonna be the the biggest red flag for folks that wanna start up a business.
What do you know about the state, uh the the state plans for Route two, Route two corridor development?
Not much off the top of my head, um but that's the sort of thing I can easily pull up and just chew on for a little while and get a sense of what they're projecting.
Too easy, but okay, if you can do it.
Yeah, that's right.
I'd be real interested in understanding it because.
Sure, I I can distill that a bit, yeah.
Route, Route two from a, from a heavy truck, um moving material interstate, Route two is really a dead end.
Hmm.
You you go over Phillips and it goes down the two lanes and.
Yeah.
And uh it's dangerous as hell, you go over to Irving, it's down the two lanes, Blue Road, Blacktop, uh and you're on the edge of a river.
Well, well.
Yeah.
Uh it's really a dead end and and it really need, if that opens up, and I don't think it will open up in the in the very near future, but potentially.
I can.
But it's a state road and it has always been uh, the money never went there.
We can, like, we can reach out to MassDOT and see if they have any documents that outlined development uh plans for that chunk of Route two. Um cause they're usually very good about following up with their projections, about having all the numbers and money in in the front row.
It's just the money goes somewhere else, you know?
Yes, but they're usually pretty good about holding on to their their work plans, their order at least, so from there, we might be able to to kind of magic ball some knowledge that might come out of it.
How about? How about the uh marijuana industry?
That's something that is going to be a, it's going to be an asset for this area, not necessarily for Hubbardston. I'm working with a couple of developers that are uh constructing, you know, the the mill, you guys know Hardwick very well?
Mm-hmm.
You know the large old knitting mill on Main Street?
Mm-hmm.
I just got uh an application, well, we got an application for a a firm, a partnership that comes out of New York and California. They want to redo that old mill, completely rehab the entire thing and turn it into a essentially a destination where it has a the the manufacturing and processing in the back. But in the front, they have a restaurant, a brewery, a storefront, dispensary, that sort of thing, they're gonna turn that into its own little destination in the middle of Main Street. And with it's gonna come between fifty-five and a hundred jobs, it depends on what capacities they're allowed to operate. That there makes them the second-largest employer in Hardwick behind the school. So that's going to be kind of Hardwick's strategy, is to leverage their industrial space for interior growing for that stuff. Um I'm not saying that'll fit hard Hubbardston at all, because I I don't think it really drives me.
We don't have any big, you know, like Ethel.
Exactly, we don't have any large mills, we don't have any.
Ethel has a project, I think they have four hundred thousand square feet under it.
Yep, and the same thing with Whitemanville, my grandmother lives in Whitemanville and she's, you know, all involved with that.
Yeah.
It's those mills, those old mill buildings are gonna be the first, the lowest-hanging fruit to redevelop and uh that's, yeah.
Love them, I've been.
I got some slides on on Littleton, which has, there's a marijuana store in Gardner.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a a retail outlet for a growing operation in Littleton. And Littleton's community agreement, uh I think it's roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
Coming out of a thirty thousand square foot building.
Yeah, that's that's kind of Hardwick's, that's kind of their strategy, um that's a larger component of their uh their economic development strategy. And part of my job is to make sure that we don't compete with each other. Um so I'm sure we'll be able to find something, if you have applicants for that sort of thing that come before you guys, looking for a host community agreement or have an idea to redevelop or grow outside, I'd love to get involved in that. Just to make sure that the iteration that gets, that happens here in Hubbardston doesn't interact with Hardwick. Part of my job is mostly to be a, not a referee, but. Part of my job is mostly to be a, not a referee, but kind of like a gate, a concierge to make sure you guys don't compete with each other.
We we've talked a half a dozen
Yeah.
Opportunities.
Yeah.
Um for revenue, jobs.
Mm-hmm.
Um a development of type.
Yeah.
And how do we move from sitting and waiting for someone to ring our doorbell with this opportunity
Hmm.
to actively promoting the town for the kind of opportunities that we want?
So if I could, I'm sorry, I could jump in there. So one of my last questions for for our time here would be, if you as a board had a dream um final product or an end product of of Todd's work, what would that be? So that might be um an investigation of of something like that or a product that puts us into that place, but what are your thoughts and and what are your direction in terms of, you know, if you finish your year here and this is what we got out of it, that would be great. I don't know if that's answerable tonight, but that helps us frame uh his time and his work here at Hubbardston.
It it's not.
Is that perfect?
It's not very easily answered tonight, you'd have to overgeneralize. But um the survey and the master plan, you you before you set out exactly what to do, you have to kind of ask yourself, what do you want the town to be in ten years? What do you want the town to be in thirty years? What do you want it to look like? Uh do you want it to look like Holden's Main Street or or you know, or
About the traffic problems?
Bedford or you know, what is it gonna, what is it really gonna look like? And uh not just visually, but
Yeah, just aesthetically.
Was it feel like, was it smell like, was it taste like, you know?
Cause communities like are, they're they're living things. I don't wanna anthropomorphize them too much, but cities to me are alive.
Yeah.
They have a personality, they have a routine and a rhythm. They they have their own quirks and foibles and assets. And that's something that you really need to to be in touch with and that's what makes you, I think, in my opinion, a good planner or a good planning board member or something like that. Knowing what's in spirit of a town and it's kind of unethical. You can't really elucidate it properly, it just is, if that makes sense. But that's something that we all need to be on the same page.
Well, it's it's moldable, it's changeable.
It is. It's it de- it.
It doesn't have to be.
It 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 transforms and has different permutations and.
I. For a lot of reasons, I drive through Route two over near Ethel.
Mm-hmm.
There's this giant market basket complex building on a hill and and the downtown is getting a brewery and the, you know, it's uh their library is really nice.
Mm-hmm.
Uh they have YMCA, which is a little rare in small towns. Uh it's just it's just kind of interesting and it was always a a town that wasn't really a magnet.
Yeah.
But they've got a chance at it, you know?
If you look at that complex that they put over there in Ethel, that was offered to Templeton.
Yep.
And Templeton declined it. And they're actually starting to work that property right off of Route two. Uh now.
In Templeton, you mean?
In Templeton, probably.
Yeah, but it's a long way off.
But they lost all that revenue and loo- and look how it looks now, it's beautiful out there and they bring in a lot of business over there with all the different, and they got more businesses going in there and.
It has the potential to kill downtown, but they're gonna they're gonna work on that.
Right, but how do you bring something like that into our community? They keep it off the beaten path so it doesn't destroy the community look. But bring in something like that, how how do you get that?
Yeah.
So would that come in the form of a consolidation of all existing plans into one directional plan? This is uh final products talking here. Or options, right, options to present to a town meeting, say, you know, this is a consolidation of ideas from the planning board, the select board and 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 current structures. Uh what would you like Todd to do?
Yeah.
And again, I'm not saying answer it now, but this is the direction that I want to give the twenty percent of time that we have.
Correct.
Uh because if we are able to fund this position again or or it's fruitful, then Todd will be doing that next year.
Yeah.
And that's kind of what we wanna be at. What I don't want is to um to not direct this energy that we have here and ha- have it go somewhere else.
Right.
Um I hope that some town folk see this discussion, hear this discussion, hear about this discussion. Um I hope to have you back again.
Oh, yeah.
Uh we'll we'll do this again and I think we need to put more on the table, more concrete stuff on the table. Here's the report on this thing, here's the report on this thing.
It won't be a factor. The more you give me, I would rather have way too much than not really.
Yeah.
I would rather possibly give him all that information and we all go up, get up to date on it and then have another meeting and sit down and talk a little more.
That sounds great, yeah.
I think that way we.
And 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 how do we involve um Concom, not we involve, but how do, how does this effort um gather up all the other thinkers and doers in town? Um and I don't mean the only point that board members of various things, but just citizens.
Yeah.
How do we marshal the energy in citizens to contribute to it, both, you know, in the idea phase, but also in the do the work phase?
Hmm. That's.
The master plan needs some help there, it needs needs real workers, it needs people to sit down and write it.
There are a lot of There are a lot of beautiful documents that are just dusting on shelves, it's it's heartbreaking.
Yeah.
But it it really is, like I've seen some elegant documents that are wonderful, that are equal, everyone agrees are wonderful documents that have been sitting on the shelves since seventy-eight, you know?
I'm gonna.
That's that's heartbreaking.
I'm gonna finish with a little story, I think. Uh a woman um took the sho- took down from the shelf Worcester's uh master plan.
Hmm.
And she's just reading through it and it came upon a chapter on uh open space and and preservation of land. And um she and another woman started the Worcester County Land Trust.
Ah, yeah.
And today they have like twenty-seven hundred acres
Oh, yeah.
in Worcester.
Yeah.
Under preservation.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and it's just a marvelous story, they just celebrated their thirtieth anniversary. And uh I was there for that, a little cake and
Yeah.
And uh but just just taking that plan down and reading it and saying, I'm gonna do this.
Yeah, yeah.
Very powerful.
The Greater Worcester Land Trust is an amazing organization.
Yep.
I worked with them when I was doing all my work in Worcester. I worked for the Maine South uh Community Development Committee. Um and I Worcester, I I got a soft spot for Worcester. I went to school there, at least for my undergraduate stuff, and I I love that town. But we're getting off topic. Um.
My my fear is, my fear would be Todd gives a presentation at the end of his one year, which will be this time, around this time next year.
July fifteenth, yeah.
And one of our boards and and all the big boards in town or residents says, you know, what would have been great is if this would have been incorporated.
Hmm.
So why not spend a little energy now, making sure that Todd has everything that we want? And then maybe we can get some of that harmony we're talking about and that cohesiveness in terms of a lot of different.
I I I I hear what you're saying, but I think at six months, you have to have your army in place and people marching. You can't wait till the end of the year and say, oh, here's my report and no one has been mobilized.
You're right.
You have to mobilize and move, make people be, not make, uh have people moving forward towards their goals with assignments and things happening so that when you leave at six more months, the momentum carries. It's not a report. It's a, it's a uh active army.
Do you think they should, you should have a meeting like this with other boards besides the planning board and the selectmen?
Yeah, so and and we believe that the planning board should go first for this conversation to help frame, considering it it's a it's a complaining question.
Okay.
Uh next, probably sometime next month, we'll have uh Todd go in front of the select board, hopefully some of it will be developed, we'll invite the planning board, of course, uh to have a conversation with them, you know, as as policymakers.
Yeah.
And then um and then do, right? Uh finance committee for sure at some point, there's only so much Todd to go around, so I don't wanna burn him out, but uh.
Yeah. Ah, it's all right. I I could talk about this.
Looks like a pretty good energy level.
I I could talk about this for ages, it's fine.
I think we had a, we have a question to mention.
Uh one thing, one thing I'd like to uh have you perhaps take a specific look at is we have uh seven or eight gravel pits in our town.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Mm-hmm.
And uh most of them are um depleted and, but they're larger tracts of land. And if we were going to ever consider a Hubbardston industrial park.
That'd be a plus.
Um a lot of that land might be uh usable, well, you know, given given the right industry to come.
We'd have to check the zoning and all of that.
Well, that's that's one thing we'd have to check, the the zoning could be expanded, you know, if if that were our goal to have have a little park.
Mm-hmm.
But uh you know, certainly uh you could have taken one of those gravel pits and then put market basket there with that whole complex.
That's definitely what I.
Yeah. Yeah, I'd.
So so as I'm I'm asking you specifically to take a look at the opportunities in that area of our town.
I'll take a look, I don't know how well Big Bucks would go as far as, I don't know if folks would push back against it.
So if we don't wanna. People who read it, I need to.
Um I don't wanna see this turn into like a Gardner situation where they have Walmart and they have a, you know, all these huge chains. Those, they have a long, there's a long academic track record that pulls against Big Bucks stores and the way that it kind of increases leakage of in a community.
You can design an industrial park to have whatever types of uh industry in there, they don't have to be Walmart or 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 that that type of, so.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, we we would probably have to have some folks that were expressing interest that are coming from the industrial side, so we know there's a tenant for whatever we build.
Yeah.
But yeah, I'm totally open to that, absolutely.
Thank you.
I'd like to throw out there at the beginning of our conversation during this meeting, when we were talking with Todd, you that you or someone else made mention of Marlboro?
I I spoke, I spoke about Marlboro.
And how well they've come and how what they have done?
Yeah.
How, what are you talking about? Are they very industrialized? I know they.
Yeah, I was talking about their development pattern, yeah.
Well, right, that kind of would kind of ruin our ru- character.
Exactly.
Yeah.
You're right.
But can you attract?
At four ninety-five, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that too.
But can you attract something, a little portion of that? And like we've talked before, you really don't get much revenue off of that, but a lot of these communities have made a lot of money off of them.
Yeah, well, usually you, whenever you're looking at commercial development like that, you look at it at the spillover into land values. Which increases land values, which increases your your real estate tax levy by proxy. So you're not really targeting the commercial development for just the commercial taxation.
Mm-hmm.
You're looking for it as it increases demand for land in this area, which increases prices, which increases tax levy revenue. So you're you're kind of looking at it two or three steps removed. But I don't think that the exact development pattern that that Marlboro chose to take, which is not right or wrong, it's just different. Uh I don't know if that is uh in line with what we wanna have here.
And that's fine, cause I I think that's too much anyway, so.
Yeah, it it's a whole bunch.
Like Rutland, Rutland has had a effort beating the drum for almost thirty years on developing where the Rutland State Hospital was. It's eighty-five acres, it's uh town, it's
Running the center of town.
Sewer.
Yeah.
Uh drinking water, everything's in there, the infrastructure's there.
Hmm.
Uh and they have not had any nibbles.
Yeah.
And I think they have a nibble now, but it's a very small piece of the whole pie.
I'd have to make some calls, I don't know if they have a nibble.
Yeah, they have a have a nibble. And uh but good for them.
Yeah.
But it but the point is, um and in industrial development is really hard. And Rutland, as you said earlier, their land values are going up, their tax revenues are going up by proxy, as you just said, without industrial development. Just by this plain old squeeze of population.
Yeah, it's.
And uh.
Well, they're really overbuilt, so it's.
I I think they're kind of.
You ain't seen nothing, yeah.
Yeah, they're kind of in, uh not panic relief, but they're in kind of damage control mode.
It's a four hundred worth.
Mm-hmm, that's right.
I think they've overburdened the cart and now they're trying to sort it out. Um and that's, they didn't have a prof- professional planner on staff, they had citizen planners like in the in the in the planning boards and that's not to knock them, they did their level best. Um but this is, that's the situation that really kind of begets the need and belies the need for a uh a professional member of a planning staff.
They also changed their regulation, or actually dropped the.
Yeah, too. Yeah, they they loosened them or just removed them altogether, which shows the need for regulation, you know, within.
Um, how are we doing? Is that about it?
Are we overloaded on time or?
You you've you've, we've taken more of you than, you're you're very generous. And I appreciate your coming in. We owe you some things, we wanna make your time here easy and effective.
Yeah.
So we wanna give you everything we got. And at the risk of overloading you, we're gonna give it to you rather than hold.
If 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 it's on the cusp and you don't know if I want it or not, give it to me.
Yeah. Give it, alright.
I'm gonna give you my contact.
And and uh.
Sure.
Keeper of the paperwork.
Oh, great, thank you. Um but uh my.
Um we will try to keep a list of what we're giving you.
My main goal for serving this entire region, this is my home. I do want to make sure that these five towns, they understand the stakes of what's coming up down the line in five to seven years. And I wanna really make as big a splash as possible, so folks around here know, then they might even not know what the planning function does. That's okay, not everyone has to. But people know the end results of bad planning or no planning. And uh people have driven in Boston, they know what happens when you don't plan. And I wanna avoid as much of that clutter and chaos as possible. Make sure that folks are are set up for success in the next generation that comes in. So it's it's really important to me that even if I don't get another year or we don't extend this, we don't get the grant or whatever, I wanna make sure that this entire region is set up to kind of coast through and have have some surety that they're gonna be okay. That's really my my main brand goal. Oh, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You know, um if you guys have anything else, you can call me, email me at the information you have, I can give you my phone number too. Uh that's, you know, you can call me when you need.
I'm sure you want that, do that.
I'm not afraid.
You know, you can, if you email it to the planet right there, that's my email, I can forward it off to those guys.
Oh, yeah. Oh, right, yeah. Uh.
Yeah, we'll we'll.
So you want to write it on there? Oh, yeah.
We'll really, really exchange.
Yeah, yeah, sure, right right on here.
And we'll post as much of this information as we can, so that not just you get it, but the public gets it.
If you can read that, cheers.
Thirty-seven one oh, okay.
Yeah, thirty-seven. But uh I'm gonna make sure that those deliverables that we talked about uh are done sooner than later. I would rather give you guys a draft soon, so that way we can talk about the draft and start working on that.
Thank.
Let's just start with dates.
Yeah, yeah.
But we'll talk.
Yeah.
Ryan?
I've got all the energy I just wanna get to.
I know I know we covered a lot of ground, but have, has this accomplished from your perspective? Has this, from my perspective, it's accomplished what I wanted to do, like I wanted to hear these things. But from your perspective, have we uh advanced or stayed marching in place or where where are we?
Uh this is good, so um I gave some solid deliverables from my office. Todd's been able to hear what the the planning board wants, efforts have been made, some challenges we heard tonight. Some uh some of the different sticking points were 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 discussed and and you picked up on some of those, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Uh the same will happen at at the select board meeting, it'll be a sort of a different approach, a different audience. And then the the idea here is to combine into one vision, you know, for the town and to stop stop the idea that there's a master plan and there's what the selectmen want and what the planning board wants and kind of figure out, you know, what does Hubbardston want, is what Hubbardston wanna look like. This is a great opportunity to to use a coordinator, that's the whole point of the idea, so let's use it.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
To answer your question, yes, this was really helpful, got good input from from the planning board and hopefully energize the planning board to help in this process.
Later on down the line, I spoke to Teresa and she expressed interest along with myself about getting some folks, all the town administrators, uh if we can arrange it scheduling wise to once we're down down the line a bit and we know kind of sort of what the plan is, having all of you guys kind of kind of meet up together and exchange some ideas, much like we're having now.
So Teresa is the town administrator for Hardwick and New Braintree.
Yeah, so she's forty percent of.
Forty percent of Cloris.
Yeah. It doesn't go to.
We need to.
She's a heavy guy.
Oh, we're gonna do it, please.
It's love ours.
I uh I didn't take what you did.
I think having all of.
I have what I did.
Maybe even two or three meetings down the line.
I have the old email.
We're supposed to meet next week.
And uh.
It'll be in October.
What we can do is uh.
Can you email me?
This was gonna be, how are you just, how are you settling, what's all, settling in sort of meeting, I think.
Yeah.
No, yeah.
Ten more, that's all.
So I'm not.
So uh.
I still don't have a computer.
Well, what's, oh, nine pound, nine pound.
I've been doing it here.
You know what it works, shit.
I don't know.
Um.
No.
But um I've been doing all my document construction.
Sure, and give me.
I have all my time.
So those, the those we've talked about, we'll talk after, I don't wanna talk.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, I've got this.
And that making uh.
In voices from.
Yes, you did, I hear, mhm. Right.
Sorry, thank you so much.
Any, anything you need.
It's just, I just, it's that I stay.
That's them.
Yeah, if you wanna, like, go ahead and pay them or.
Um.
My.
You're not in tomorrow either.
Why don't you look at them and um
Okay.
Let me know, maybe Monday or Tuesday, what.
Hold them until Monday, I'll come over to your office Monday, when time do you give?
Three.
Alright, three o'clock Monday.
Okay.
I'll be there at three thirty, give you a chance to.
Is there something needed to talk about at the end of this call? Bring it to the next meeting.
Oh, okay.
I need to make them wait a month.
Let me, let me ask you. Hello, folks.
Should.
I need a, I need authorization to resolve the um
Just take a look at those.
The place, the um Borrego payments to their uh buckets, I'll call them buckets, their accounts from which the money goes to places. I'm gonna meet with, I I'd like authorization to meet with Patty uh Monday and our treasurer accountant. Pickup kind of where Tom Bracko left off, he was sorting this out. I have no familiarity with.
You need a motion for that?
Well, I don't know what I need, but I I'm I'm gonna go do that, okay? So.
I don't think you need a motion.
She won't be in Monday, so I think we just need to talk about whether we're gonna authorize me to cut a couple checks through them for places. I didn't.
Is this the money that's going back to the to Borrego because of being bought out?
On Monday.
I thought, what is it for a construction review of?
No, no, it came in from Borrego because they they use the services of Bill Murray and now it's gotta go out to Bill Murray.
This is for Gardner Road. And this was for, I think you, when you did the walkthrough, the site walk.
Yeah, so.
So it's a seventeen hundred dollar bill for that site walk that um he did. So it's a seventeen hundred dollar bill for that site walk that um, he did. Remember, it was a couple of months ago?
Yep. So we'll, we'll authorize payment of that. And um, I just wanna see that it's going in the right buckets and the right accounts.
Okay.
So I'll, I'll meet up with you Monday and we'll, we'll do whatever we have to do.
I'd like to make a motion that we figure out how we're gonna fix this problem with Francois being on the board. Um, well, I wanna, the selectmen have appointed them and you say you won't recognize them. How do we fix this?
Um, I don't think it's that complicated. Um, the select board, I, in my opinion, didn't follow the right process. We put a name forward and they ignored us and did something on their own. They need to, I think, correct that situation. If our name is, if the name we put forward is in some way unacceptable, you ought to communicate to us. And uh, if we have to put up another name, we have to put up another name. But it's just like the filling of the uh empty seat when Tom resigned. Uh, Ryan put forth a process that when we followed it, we got two great candidates. Or what a, two appear to be great candidates. And um, if you follow the process, things work out well. If you don't follow the process, you end up in a mud puddle.
So how can we fix this? So we can go forward here. I wanna, I wanna get this going, this board moving on, so we can all sit down and work together, but we can't work like this. So you don't agree with what the.
Oh, wait, oh, 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 wait a minute, wait a minute.
We can't work like this.
Tom, let me finish, please. Okay. You don't agree with what the select board did. How do we get everybody together and we fix this? I told them.
Well, we need to move forward here and.
Tom told them, Tom told them in a letter, I told them verbally.
But I think we do employ a town manager and they oversee the the regulations and the laws. Um, noth- nothing against you and Tom. Maybe my interpretation would be different too, I don't know. I haven't read the regulations. But who are we gonna go by here? Are we, are we just gonna ignore this now? I I don't think it's right, uh, Tom, I don't think it's right.
All right, here's, here's a comment. You said we can't work this way. Recognize that the alternative, the the alternate member only involves, only is involved in planning board activity when um, the issue is a vote on a special permit, none of which we have before us. And the regular board, for some reason, um, is, is incapacitated or fails to be able to do a super majority, which is full.
But I still, and thank you for that information, but I still think it's wrong for us to keep going forward in the manner that we are, that this is still not, we haven't finished this. We need to as a board or as a group, selectman, town, whoever, we need to fix this and and move on from there. Instead of having this turmoil like front of a certain time we meet.
I don't have any turmoil.
Oh, not turmoil, but it's, it's just not right. I wanna move on this way. We need to either get with the town manager, the selectman, town council. Have you meet with them? Uh, we need to fix this, one way or another. That's gonna stand up.
Yes, sir.
Well, you've got a joint meeting coming up uh next Monday. Why don't you put that on the agenda for the joint meeting? And then you'll have all the players around the table and you can uh, you can address it at that time and and get some closure.
If I may, uh, I believe that this is a matter that needs to be addressed by the town council, because the laws, regulations, as well as the bylaws, need to be interpreted from a legal perspective. I understand that Tom Robinson, as well as Tom Bracco, has a certain interpretation of the law. And I'm not judging you in one way or the other. You have the right to interpret this here. But the true interpretation really has to come from town council. And it is my thought and my belief that it is therefore a matter that needs to be addressed by them.
I um would be reluctant to spend a lot of money on town council for this nonsense. I think if the uh select board uh meet with us Monday and I express to them what they have to do, it can be resolved very easily. As I say, Tom did it in writing, Tom did it verbally, I did it verbally. Um, if I can capture their attention, we could resolve this Monday.
The drag, that works.
Well, it's a matter of capturing their attention and.
Can we put that on Monday's agenda? Ryan?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
I I don't control the agenda.
Yeah. Um, it's a joint meeting.
You could communicate with the selectmen that uh that this issue has come up and would they like to see it on the agenda?
I can, I can ask them.
They, they, they could listen to this tonight and know that, what they have to do. That's, it's very simple. Uh, they're not in the process, they have to get back in the process and when they do, it'll work out fine. I have no problem.
Well, I think we have to uh differentiate between opinions and laws. So, uh, with that, maybe uh Monday's meeting will suggest that it should be referred to town council and get them out of resolve so we can move, move forward, both boards.
We have no impediment due to this situation and we have no turmoil, we have no hindrance to our, our uh board.
Todd, there is an impediment, because the impediment comes up when you have a special permit, you don't have a associate member.
Ed, you didn't hear me. I said.
When you have a, when you have a super majority vote, you don't have it.
All right. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Um, we're not gonna drag this out. It's very simple. I've explained it here tonight, I've explained it to the select board. The issue is not gonna be discussed any further. I'm uh, I guess I'm getting a little tired. I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn. And but before I do, I wanna thank you people for attending tonight. I think it was very, very helpful. I wanna thank the people from the public that attended and your contribution, comments, uh, about other towns and what you know from other towns. Thank you very much. Patty, thank you for being here. But, good night. Gonna get a motion to adjourn.